Welcome to the Wednesday, April 25th, 2018, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. I call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV as well as being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to correspondence. Melanie, can you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we have an emailed note from Dr. Sally Haig dated April 6th, 2018 regarding a U.S. government report regarding the disparities of discipline for boys, students with disabilities, and students of color in schools.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the April 3rd, 2018, school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Any discussion? Rustia.
Yeah, so for some reason it says sincerely Rustia.
I think, I noticed that too.
Maybe it's your email signature or something?
Because you did it.
Do you want to take it out?
Yeah, they are. For April 3rd.
Yeah, but this is my email. It doesn't want a minute.
What would you like to take off?
Sincerely Rustia.
Okay. Can we, can we change the motion to as amended?
Sure. I move that the school committee approve the minutes as amended to the April 3rd, 2018 school committee meeting.
And Karen, are you?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Reposed? Man abstained? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to visitor comments.
Would that be yes?
Nope, not yet. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to school committee and mounds sense and recognition. Anybody have anything from the school committee?
I briefly, just give me one second, sorry.
I'll, I'll jump ahead of you and just
Go ahead.
congratulate Bryn Cartelli again for advancing as far as she has. And I know there's a, there's a show on sometime soon again. Does anyone know the next air date for when Bryn will be there?
She does one, another one, next Monday.
Next Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, congratulations to Bryn and really excited, it's been fun watching.
There's a rally this afternoon at 2:30, a high school gymnasium for her, and The Voice will be taping, so that's really exciting. It's, but it's a secret Bryn.
(laughter)
Well, it's a secret just to Bryn, so I'm assuming Bryn is not watching.
I think she's probably too busy.
She is.
She is.
She's never going to find out.
I know, right? I thought that. That's not true. All right. Jess, are you good? We can
I just wanted to thank again, Melanie mentioned we received a correspondence from Sally Haig. I hope I'm pronouncing her last name correctly. But I really appreciate it when parents send information like this to the school district. It's really helpful. She sent us a study about disparities in discipline, specifically regarding black students, boys, and students with disabilities who are, per the study, being disproportionately disciplined. And I really look forward to, both as a school district and sort of nationwide, looking at these issues because I think it's a real, real problem. And, you know, I can only speak from, from my own experience with a son and having two older girls, that I see a very stark difference in the way that, you know, schools reach boys versus girls. I think the pendulum can tend to swing in both ways, and I think there's, there are some things we need to look at with regard to these demographics. And I hope that our town will continue to do that and continue to improve where we need to. So, thank you Sally for sending this to the committee.
Anything else? Okay. Moving on to business with guests. This is you. We have Mary Beth Bergeron here to present the senior center, senior center.
That is correct. Well, first of all, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes of your time during your meeting today. We sincerely appreciate it. We have been reaching out to leadership within the community to inform them about the town meeting and what we see is a very important vote for the town in reference to the new Adult and Community Center at Greenwood Park. And we're doing this for informational purposes, to show you the plan, et cetera. When the committee originally met, we attempted to identify not only the needs of the senior community in our, in our town, but also the community at large, which is why this has really become a community center rather than just an adult center or a senior center. So, I'm going to, I've invited John Catlin, who is the architect, who has designed the center. There has been a lot of input into this, specifically over the last month or so, in terms of this preliminary design and what people might want. I do want to speak very briefly to the demographics in our town. Currently, there are 4,509 people over the age of 60, in addition to which, between the ages of 50 and 60, what I call the rising senior, is 2,666 people. Combined, when those people reach their senior years, which is at age 60 and over, we will represent close to 45 percent of the town. The existing senior center is insufficient to meet the needs of that group of people, of that demographic. I'm sure you're all aware that between the ages of zero and 18, there are approximately 2,500 people in town. So, that you can see, there's a skewed demographic in terms of the, the needs of the community. I think all of you would probably admit, there has been some lack of parity between the resources of the town and how they've been allocated to our senior community. This year, the budget for the Council on Aging is $156,000. That is not a significant amount of money. In addition to which, all of the social services take place out of the Council on Aging, the Meals on Wheels program, the town nurse, the veterans agent, the social services coordinator, as well as all of the programming and lunches that are held over at the existing center. It is just simply insufficient to meet the needs of that growing population, the existing population, never mind the growing population. So, John is going to go through a PowerPoint presentation to you. He's going to make it as quick as possible and specifically concentrating on how it impact, will impact the youth in our community as well as perhaps some young adults. The beginning part of the program, of the PowerPoint, shows some of the deficiencies in the building as they relate to, the existing building as they relate to senior, our senior community. Then, the plan for the new portion of the building that is allocated towards senior use, and that'll be extended in other hours to the rest of the community because it is a municipal building. And then he will spend more time talking about the field space as well as the basketball court that is part of the plan. So, I'm going to turn this over to John Catlin. John is from Catlin and Petrovic Architects. We went through an RFQ, he submitted his firm's qualifications. We had five companies that we interviewed. By far, he came out on top, but by a long shot. He has designed 46 senior centers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, plus other centers around the country. In addition to which, he is a national speaker on elder issues, so he comes well-prepared to address all of the needs of our community here in Long Meadow. Let me also say that the seniors in our community recognize that the school system is our brand. Combined with that, you have an elite sports program that covers a broad range of soccer, basketball, volleyball, football, all of those programs that keep our youth happy, engaged, and physically fit. So, I'm going to turn this over to John, and he will bring you through the PowerPoint.
Well, thank you, Mary Beth. Very kind introduction. I'm always nervous in front of a lot of the well-educated people, but I'm going to go through quickly. What I really want to talk about very briefly is the, how many here have been to the senior center, have actually seen it? Oh, good, so I don't have to show a bunch. So, I'll go quickly through what the senior center is all about. But what it is, is that we're looking at the site here. Obviously, the existing senior center is here. The youth daycare and camp programs come out of this building and part of this building, and they're utilizing this part of the site. The pool's here, and the main entrance is here, and these older tennis courts are located I'm just going to walk through, just to remind everybody what we have. This was a middle school or elementary school. All of the bathrooms are designed for small children. Actually, when we designed for the elderly, we raised everything up higher than normal, especially toilets. There's some issues there. Privacy is a big problem. There's lots of counseling that goes on inside senior centers, both family counseling, financial counseling, and medical and health counseling. Privacy is really critical. There isn't any in the center. As I mentioned, the bathrooms are not really highly accessible, especially for the elderly. Our community room is particularly small. The building itself, too, is dated, both energy-wise and besides the physical aspects of the building. The windows are single-pane aluminum, unthermalbroken, so they really blow out the energy. Here is the, what we call the fitness and game room. They're going to play one game at a time. It's tight. So, we're looking at the park itself, and we're able, after a lot of discussion, looking at several locations for the senior center, we wanted to locate it centered between two key areas, a community pool and the community youth center over here. We're looking at a new playing field that would be located here. It's a three, it's a three-purpose field. It's a field like this, all full-size for middle school, and also two small youth subfields located within the same structure. These are pickleball courts, outdoor patio. This is south, so the center orients to the south. We want to keep the parking for the elders away from the parking for the younger people. It's a safety issue. This is the programming that led us to the size of the building. We spent a lot of time individually on rooms and how they would affect the operation and the needs of the community. And this is roughly the floor plan. The red color is the program space, the main entrance is here. You can see, this is the senior center, and this is the gymnasium that we're talking about, that both, both will serve for seniors during the day, but also have a lot of connection, both to the youth center that's over to the right, as well as after-hours for young adult and high school participation. They have their own entrance. Over in this corner is a key part of the community base, and that is the, the food pantry, the veterans agent, and the nurse. They have their own separate entrance because the nurse and a lot of these folks see people other than seniors, having young kids who might have an illness. It's best not to have them within the building with the elders, but at the same time, it's important to be able to have elders come in and access this, this resource. This is the kitchen and commercial kitchen, the multipurpose room. There's a performance stage that both, is both internal and external. This is the outdoor patio. Getting people outdoors is really important. So, what we've done is we created what we call a main street here, and with an open access to a cafe, which has outdoor seating here, down a, a large open seating area with an information board here, a major stair and elevator that takes you up, and a lounge library on this level along with the bathrooms. The gym is connected both to the lounge library as well as outside and this way, too. Go on here. Up, up on the second level, we have a multipurpose room that we look down on from our game and, and card area. We have two classrooms or activity rooms, one with a residential kitchen for cooking classes. This is the fitness facility. One of the major new elements we add to senior centers today is fitness. The senior centers really provide three key things for healthy aging. Socialization, engagement, both through meals, gathering, card games, games, cafe, lounge library. The second one is nutrition. We provide meal, a meal site here. There's a cafe for, for sub, what we call minor nutrition. And then the third one is exercise. And if we maintain socialization and engagement along with nutrition and exercise, unless you've had an accident or an illness, this really promotes what we call healthy aging, keeping people within our community. This also, oops, I'm going to go back one, sorry. I don't know why this thing's jumping ahead here. Real quickly, this fitness area connects to an out, a raised walking, running track, which is also accessible from the gymnasium for indoor exercise, especially during the winter. This is both set up so that seniors can do a walking experience, or there could be a running experience for younger people, or for, a lot of us still run. I do. What's nice about this, too, is this also looks down into the gymnasium, to the activities, so there's a lot of oversight going on in terms of the synergy of the space. This is a proposed look. We wanted to stay within the tradition of, of Long Meadow in terms of its beautiful homes. We want to have a feeling that, one of the most important things about elder centers is that we don't want them to look institutional. We want them to be an extension of your home. Part of that is to help people get out of their homes and get engaged in the community. I don't know what anybody's been to Holyoke, it's a little bit more larger center, but it has that very similar residential feel inside. You can see, here is the outdoor patio area with a performance stage here that connects to the interior. This is the gymnasium. And if you remember from the site, the gymnasium faces the daycare youth center. Some examples of what it would look like inside. This is a monumental stair that connects up, you can see it here. This is a, what we call the lobby area, which is a high-energy area. Information board is here, the reception is here. Then there's quieter spaces off for others to gather and, and be social. Cafes are really important. People come in in the morning, there's coffee, there's muffins. It's very much part of the action of the entrance where the, where a lot of the synergy occurs. Go here, there we go. Here is a lounge library area, it's quieter, a little bit more peaceful, there's card games, there's a knitting group, I'm not sure what I have them pictured here. There's game room, cards and billiards. Billiards help engage the men. Hard to get the men into these centers. You see that in action. Fitness is really critical. This is a, an example of a fitness center. A lot of these have overlooks down into the multipurpose rooms or other spaces, so there's a lot of interaction between the spaces. The multipurpose room is a large room, it has both meal site, in this case, here's the commercial kitchen, serving out of here with the meals set up, there's a dividing wall. This is from the platform stage. The gymnasium is really critical, not only for the elders, but for youth, too. Here's a pickleball setup. It's one of the hottest-growing sports, not only for young, I mean for old, but for young, too. I play it. I'm not sure whether I'm old or young. I haven't figured it out yet. Nobody's told me. Here's an idea of what it looks like with the running track up above. In this case, this is senior volleyball, could be youth volleyball. Courts are set up to go both crosswise for youth basketball and lengthwise for high school-level basketball. And you can get an idea of the oversight over, over the top. And this is a rendering of how we think the Long Meadow Gym could work out to be, with the walking track above or running track, kids on the basketball court over, overviews, views out onto the site. Out here is where that youth soccer field would be. Pickleball courts were planned to be over here. I think that's, that's our cost, which I think you're all familiar with. It's currently budgeted at $14 million all-in.
Thank you.
And I tried to be quick. I hope I was quick.
Thank you so much. I knew everyone had time limits today, and that's the only reason for the, for the limit on the presentation. So, thank you so much. That was an excellent overview of everything. It looks beautiful and exciting for our community. I think it adds value and incorporates so many of the needs that
Not just the elderly, but I think a real effort, what, what happens in NADAC
Shut that off.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Did I shut it off? Not only for the elderly, but, you know, in NADAC, they have a similar setup with a gymnasium.
Right.
From 4 until 11 o'clock at night, five days a week, there's young adult basketball league. And every Saturday, from 8:00 in the morning till evening, there's a basketball league. And every Sunday afternoon. So, it's really a very, very active, and if you get a chance to see the NADAC cooperation, you'll get an idea.
It definitely takes into account.
I have reached out to some of the sports league leaders in our community, and they foresee this as I do. I mean, it'll be, the gymnasium would certainly be scheduled by Park and Rec, would not be scheduled by the Council on Aging, but, but, you know, after-hours from 3 till 10 at night, the gymnasium would be scheduled, and then again on Saturday and Sunday. And I see personally that, because of my daughter's involvement in soccer and field hockey, that many of these sports teams go through, the children go through what they call kind of winter slump, you know, they're fit until November, then they don't really do much physical activity until the season starts again in March. And this would be an ideal place for them to go and do some sort of exercise, practice, whatever, and if nothing else, to run.
Yeah. Yeah, no, thank you. I think, I think that's very clear. I think we all have younger and, you know, teens and college age and whatever, and we've seen the, the lack of space that we have in the town for the sports, and I think you definitely took that into account when you designed that, so thank you. It's clear that you worked very hard.
We did.
I know from watching you for the last couple of years, how hard you've worked, and it's obvious that you incorporated a lot of input into the design
We did.
of this from many different stakeholders in the community. So, thank you so much. Just remind us what is on the town meet, or remind our audience what's coming up at town meeting on the warrant.
There are 35 warrant articles. There is a town forum being held May 3rd at 6:00 over at the Council on Aging, which will cover the entire warrant. This particular warrant article is number 14.
Yeah.
I assume that there'll be quite a bit of discussion about the plan on the floor, and I certainly hope you'll come and support it.
Yes. So, the, the warrant article specific to this is to support, what stage are we in, I guess?
That is correct. It would be to fund the, the adult center, Adult and Community Center in the amount of $14 million.
Okay.
Understand that this plan, by the way, is not a completely final plan
Yeah.
in talking to, within the community. We've come up with a couple of little tweaks, you know, for example, switching a couple of rooms, the nurse and the food bank that is run out of the adult center, those rooms will probably be switched around. You know, just a few little things like that, that, again, that, that plan is probably going to change a little bit, and we don't have a final, final design yet.
Okay.
So, we're looking forward to May 8th. Now, May 8th is the town meeting, and if, we need two-thirds majority vote at town meeting, and then it would proceed to the town ballot on June 12th, at which point we need a majority of voters, which is 50 percent plus one. But town meeting is critical for this project to move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? We can always reach out to you, I'm sure, if we have questions later.
Absolutely, yes.
But, Russ?
Yeah, so, on the overall design scheme for the whole park, the old building, I didn't, does that stay?
The old building would remain.
And that's going to be just the day here?
Yeah. If I can just, if I can just emphasize that Park and Rec, the majority of their income comes from that building. I mean, that building is the, the, that park itself is the highest-used park in the community. There were over 17,000 visits in 2016, so that gives you an idea how many people use that park. But we have the daycare facility that is over there. After-school care is taken care of over there. The camp, the summer camps, in inclement weather, they are run out of there. In addition to all of the other programming that is held after school that is run by Park and Rec, there's dance classes, karate, all of those kinds of programs are held over there. It's really, really an active building. Now, there is true, the town manager is working on a plan to use that 8,000 square foot that would become vacant, square feet, that would become vacant when the Council on Aging moves over to the new center.
Okay.
There's an idea to repurpose that space.
Yes, yeah, we would repurpose it.
So, we'd still have a gym there?
Yes, yes.
The pool area stays the same?
That is correct, right.
And then, right now, what do they have for sports fields over there? Is that baseball?
There's, there's two baseball fields over there, but the outfield's overlap, so only one field can be used at a time for like a true game.
Okay.
The majority of use of those fields is by out-of-town leagues, and in looking at the needs of the community, we felt that this multipurpose, youth-sized soccer field was probably more needed than the baseball field.
So, that'd be soccer and lacrosse.
Add to that, my understanding is, maybe you can correct this, that at Wolf Swamp, there is a plan to add a baseball field over there, and Bliss Park, baseball fields are in the process of, in the planning of being improved. So, those, those two areas would more than accommodate what is being used currently.
So, we'd have a new field over there for soccer, lacrosse, field hockey?
Correct.
Those.
But they're youth-sized, they're not high school-sized field, that would not be a high school-sized field.
Yeah. So, it'd be like the Wolf Swamp
Right.
sized field, probably.
Correct, right.
Okay. That was it for me.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you so much.
Really appreciate it, and thank you for your heart, and we can, that would be great.
I do have some copies. There's no secrets here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know if I brought enough, actually.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you so much.
I didn't fill that.
We try.
I do have enough with me.
That's okay, you can skip me, I'll get
Yeah, the, the school committee, take them all, take
Yeah, Tom can't vote on this. Jess, did you get one?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Take care. Moving on to our athletic report and discussion. You ready for us?
So, we have Principal Tom Landers from High School, and Athletic Director Mike Capatasto, who will congratulate Mike on being a new dad since he last appeared in front of the committee, so congratulations. So, we have, we've been in regular communication with the community and the school committee on some initiatives that Tom and Mike have undertaken, and we captured much of it in memo that Tom and I had sent you a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. And tonight is an opportunity to sort of capture some of those initiatives and clarify anything that needs clarification, so if I can pull up the, they have a presentation?
Sure.
Go right, get right into it?
Sure.
All right, so, just give me one second here. I'll, I'll advance the slides for you, Tom, just tell me
Sure.
Where to go?
So, good afternoon, everyone. Happy spring. Good to see you all. Hope everyone is well. So, Mr. Capatasto and I just wanted to come back. I know we appeared in front of you in November. I know that we talked mostly about fees and structure and booster clubs and coaches and things like that on that night. I know that you got a pretty detailed report from the superintendent in late March, so nothing here is necessarily new, but I just wanted to, we just wanted to sort of summarize the year, efforts that we've been, we have undertaken this year, sort of highlight some of the things that we've done over the last few years that we probably haven't done a great job of highlighting before, and certainly answer questions after I'm done. So, my presentation will be hopefully detailed enough, but not so long. I guess, if you could go to the third, the next slide, Marty, please. The first slide is just the statistics, which, which is the demographics of athletics, and you've seen this, and you have this in your packets, but, so you have a pretty detailed slide about recent years' initiatives and enhancements. I'm not going to read through that, you have it in your packets, you, you have that information. I did want to sort of touch on a few of those and just tie them together in terms of our effort over the last few years, as well as efforts this year to improve and enhance our communication. So, everything I'm going to talk about right now has to do with communication in some way, shape, or form. And again, it's not a reading of these, but it touches on several of those. Annual, formal annual pre- and postseason meetings with coaches never really existed, never existed in the way that they do until a few years ago. It has to do with better communication with coaches, of expectations of coaches before the season, and better feedback, direct feedback to coaches after the season. It's, it's a great improvement from what had happened prior to, back-to-school night, athletic night, as well as eighth-grade parent night. We talk about things like put sports in proper context, talk about anything from concussions to opiate challenges to MIA rules, and then we finish with a face-to-face meeting between parents, athletes, and the coach. Also, communication. Related social media and electronic communication obviously has exploded. Our outreach in terms of that has, has really taken on. We have a Twitter presence. Our website has been enhanced and continues to We have a Twitter presence, our website has been enhanced and continues to be enhanced. We added some things this spring, and we're making some changes for next year. The financial reporting that we've done for the last five years to finance sub and that we've been reporting to, to our PAC or school councils have been an effort at improving communication. And this fall, as you know, we put very detailed information on our website, just trying to be transparent, trying to answer questions for parents as where does the money go? Because parents don't know that, and they say, oh, my gosh, I pay the highest fees, and where does this go? We point it out to them, we, Mr. Capitasto has broken down every team, as you know, it's one big fund. It's the same, same account, but we've broken it down so you can see what sports teams and programs are in the red, which are in the black, and where the money goes. And that's all been improved and enhanced this fall by exposing everything on the website. The booster clubs, you guys are familiar with the enhanced document. We took an old document that booster clubs in the past had, had created, we met with them, Marty, Mike, and myself met with them in the fall, got some feedback, let them give us electronic feedback, we touched base with area communities, Russ put us in communication with AGWAM, but we looked at other communities for best practices, we had some attorneys look at that, we included MIAA info. It's a much better guidance tool for booster clubs. Booster clubs are interesting because they're autonomous. We don't control them, but we certainly acknowledge that we can do a better job of guiding them than we have done in the future. I would say probably around eight, nine years ago, the state laws and the practice became to really distance yourself from booster clubs. Booster club money used to be run through student activities accounts, and then they were, they were separated by law. And when that happened, you really had sort of a, more of a hands-off approach. So while they have autonomy, it doesn't mean that they don't need help, and they don't need guidance, and they don't need insight, they do. Some of the people working on our booster clubs are very confident and very experienced, and some are brand-new. So that's a better document, it's an improved document, and in addition to us with a commitment of meeting face-to-face every year and pushing that document out to the officers and booster clubs, it'll just give them more information, we'll talk a little bit about that more in a second. Student surveys, which are in their second year, we started two years ago with really a limited pilot with captains, that wasn't giving us enough, we talked about this in, in November, but that has been added, so all seniors are surveyed, we're talking about expanding that. There are pros and cons on both sides, we're talking, you know, we could ask everyone, every student, which we may do, we're weighing those. You're looking at, do you, do you get, you know, an opportunity for seniors that have nothing to hold back, that have been there for four years, that have had context? But anyway, another great opportunity for communication, student communication to us about their experience. Enhanced website with coaches' information, coaches' contact. In short, there is more communication ever going out about not only LHS, but LHS sports, more transparency than ever, more outreach than ever. But we probably haven't done a great job of communicating about our communication, to be quite fair. We haven't had, we, you know, we took it on the chin a little bit this year about not, about our communication, and the irony of all the things that I just went through, we just have to do a better job of PR. So this is an opportunity for it, our PACs are an opportunity for it, our school councils, as I said, and really the, the direct outreach from the, from school messenger and from our website. So those are some of the things. Things to come on that same communication front, almost all of our coaches have sent out a beginning-of-the-year email. It's great to get. Not everyone has sent it out, but everybody says, you know, general expectations, how do you contact a coach, here's what to expect. Communication from here on out will be through your daughters or through your sons, or you'll get an email every, monthly, or, you know, check this website. Whatever it is, and every sport and every program is a little different, parents need clarity per program. So while that was happening in many sports, beginning of the fall, there's going to be a uniform requirement for all head coaches to send out a programmatic email after the teams are formed. Again, about those expectations. Parent survey. I spoke in November with some mixed emotions about a parent survey. I have to tell you, I want to thank the two co-presidents of my PAC, Aaron Horniak and Christina Weir, who helped me and guided me. We have a parent survey that's going to start in the fall that they, they helped me with, it's great. It, it gives us some really good feedback, some, some black-and-white feedback about what their expectation, what their experience was, what's the experience their daughter or their son, verifying things like that we, you know, we have, we have the strictest social media pro, policy, I think, that I know of. We do a really, we, we make a full-court effort to make sure that our coaches are following that. We have coaches sign off on that already, but it's important to include that question in the parent survey as well. And the, and the point is that we want to show this survey to our coaches in that preseason meeting. You're not trying to catch anybody, you're trying to set them up for success. So that's a question in there. I think you have, you have copies of it, but another question is, you know, in addition to asking some, some demographic information, do you have a son, or do you have a daughter, what sport, and at what level you would participate so we can do the demographic information, having said that, it's anonymous. You know, my child generally had a good experience in the program this past season. The sideline demeanor of the coach during practices, competitions promoted sportsmanship and was appropriate and professional. I was able to easily locate information that I needed on the LHS Athletics website, gives us information back. You know, open-ended question at the end, is there any other information you want to share with us? It's a step in the right direction. It's a good, it's a good thing to do, and, and again, it was, it was created in conjunction with, with PAC co-presidents. So that is moving forward, increased meetings with the booster clubs, as I already referenced. So all those things are already happening or starting, or planned to be enhanced next year. And the last thing that I would mention on that front, in kind of a different, it's, it's about communication, but it's also about leadership, is we are finishing up our second year of a captain's council. I don't know if any of you were captains on a team in sports in, in your high schools, we don't do, as a country, a lot to address what it means to be a captain. What does being a captain mean? Very often, the best athlete is chosen. That doesn't mean he or she is a good communicator, that doesn't mean they know what to do. If the coaches are not around and an opportunity arises or a problem arises, so we started that two years ago, Mr. Capitasto started two years ago, and they talk about what does it mean to be a captain? What will you do if this happens? What will you do when this happens? Because life comes quick, and opportunities come quick, whether it be in the locker room, whether it be on the field, the sideline, whether it be Saturday night at a social event. So again, that's about communication, but it's also about leadership, and without getting specific, that's already, has already, you know, bore fruit for us. Students come forward who might have been on the council in the fall, even though they might not be a captain later, they come and they talk to us, mostly Mr. Capitasto, and say, coach, this is what's going on, what would I do about this? You should know about this. So we've had a couple of situations where our student leaders have come forward, and it's all a direct result of the captain's council. So it's a good thing. Directions in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, Marty, please?
Sure, yeah, we can, it covered everything, but let's check it out.
Yeah, the only thing I wasn't gonna, was going to touch on that I didn't on that page was the new fee structure.
That's right.
We don't take credit for this, you guys are the first school committee to revisit kind of the fee structure since, I want to say, two thousand seven or two thousand eight. As you know, it's not easy. The school committees of two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven were dealing with cuts. They had cut teachers, they had lost positions, and they didn't want to lose more. That was the cause of those fees going up considerably. And they've been there for eleven years, and they're, once they're there, they're hard to get rid of. So just for viewers at home, to remind them of the numbers, soup to nuts, the whole LHS Athletics program annually is about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Up until a year ago, up until this school committee, we would get about seventy-five thousand dollars upfront. And you double that, you moved that from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand last year, and there's a commitment to move another thirty thousand, so we're up, we've gone from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand, and that is why you guys were able to, you know, proactively move, I think it was nine sports that you've affected and brought down twenty-five dollars. It's, it's, it's not a massive change, but it's moving the needle in the right direction, and it, it took years to get there, and I would say that, you know, that will continue, and the hope is that we can see more and more incremental funding of the, of the athletic program and bring those fees down. I think everyone's in agreement. But I want to mention that that happened, because that hasn't happened in eleven years. I think that's the only thing on that particular page. The next page just lists the nine sports that your vote affected. Boys cross-country, boys soccer, boys tennis, cheerleading, girls cross-country, girls soccer, girls tennis, indoor track for boys and girls, and swimming and diving for boys and girls. So really eleven programs when you look at it. Next slide, Marty, would be athletic fee review, please? The only thing I would say that I haven't sort of touched on, on this, is the, the last entry, future consideration, review of the family cap. I know that you're just having dialogue about that now. It's easier said than done, but as you know, right now, the cap for families, if you have multiple children or one child or multiple children, if a family is playing more than five sports, they get the sixth sport free, and I know that there's dialogue about that to potentially move that, I know it's easier said than done, but again, I want to make sure, and that all came out of the ongoing dialogue with finance sub and work that we have been dialoguing about for the last few years. There's, you have a copy on the next slide, Marty, please? You guys have a, a copy of the enhanced booster club advisory, this is just a cutoff version, but just an acknowledgement, it went from about a half a page or maybe two-thirds of one page to two full sides. It's what happens when you have, you know, input, but it's good, it's more detailed. Again, it gives MIAA information, it gives some legal guidelines and advisories to the officers. And what we have committed to doing is when we meet face-to-face, to talk about, not to mandate, not to order, because we don't have the authority to do that, but to be candid with the fact that we're thanking them, we're, we don't want to bite the hand that feeds us, we want to be appreciative of all of the volunteer work that they do and the kindness that they show to our student athletes, but also remind them that with the high fees, you're also looking at high booster fees. And play devil's advocate, and say, before you decide to invest and ask everyone to do this, please consider X, Y, and Z. That's really what our, our parents have asked us directly to do, to communicate that, to articulate that, not to say you can't ask for booster clubs, I'm, my children are student athletes, I got the booster club mandate letter yesterday, saying you will pay X, different town. We, we, you know, our communication with, with the presidents and officers are, remember to ask, not tell, remember to educate, thank you so much for what you're doing, but just please consider that not every family can continue to, you know, be, be cognizant, be aware, and that's what, that's, those are the things that verbally we're going to reiterate during those meetings, in addition to having it said, you know, on that, on that guiding Next page just has to do with features of booster club advisory.
Oh, yeah, I already, sorry, Tom. Yeah.
And it's really just what I, I talked about, nothing new. Next page, communication and feedback, I touched on already, the fact that we came in November, what the captain's council is, an athletic survey for students, the parent survey coming up, and then to the right is the first couple of questions, you have a full survey with you. The last slide really is just, it shows some of the enhancements that we've made on our website. And, and if you look to the right, you'll see, in addition to more information about games and cancellation and connecting, and the, the green folder, which has to do with all financial information per program, if people want to look at it, information about the MIAA or their website, but there are a couple enhancements coming, and what you see on the right is the first step, and that is the LHS spring sport coaches, and so it lists them. And you can scroll down, and it's, it's cut off there, but on the document, you can scroll down and find the name, the contact information of every single coach that we have. And we've talked about, and that's all official paid coaches. Quite frankly, we do not give, and I don't want to give, I don't know what your opinion is, but I don't want to give, because we have never given non-paid employees LHS emails, and quite frankly, we want, we agree that communication to parents should be coming through coaches, official paid coaches. We have some great volunteer coaches, and they go through queries, and they go through fingerprints and all that, but they're there to help. Most, in most cases, they're not there on a daily basis, they're a specialist coach, or they're showing up on Mondays and Wednesdays, but not every day, or they're showing up to help soccer goalies or lacrosse goalies. And like I said, so we're listing the, the paid coaches, and that's really who we want parents to contact, and that's who we want to contact our parents. So a lot of this has to do with communication, I think we've done a good job in the last few years about enhancing it, like I said, I think we have to really communicate about what we've been doing a little bit better, and we're going to do that. Today is an opportunity for that, and there will be more opportunities. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring full circle from November when we first chatted, but, you know, I'm assuming there's some questions or follow-ups, and we're happy to, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, that was great. Questions from the committee?
Stephanie? I first want to say that captain's council, when I spoke with you and you talked about it, I think is an awesome thing. I think it's a powerful tool for the players, and I really appreciated hearing your speak about the development of those captains and, and not really, you know, nothing really set out for how to be a captain and what that entails, and so I think that that is an awesome move and a good direction. I also like that you listed one of the high school assistant principals as a contact for parents.
Right.
That's really, I think will be a powerful tool and avenue for parents to go. I know there's hesitation for them to reach out to people in athletics, so it's just another avenue that I think is really great. I also love that the emails are up there for the coaches. I'm wondering if we can also put, I see, like, the spring are up there, and I'm wondering if we can put, like, all of them for two thousand seventeen, eighteen, so you can see who the fall was and...
So we're going to do it for every, the issue is that they change?
Yeah.
So we're having some, so it's going to be up there for every season, but we're in the process, we're, we haven't begun hiring fall coaches, we're going to do that soon.
Okay.
But every season is going to be up there, we just, we wanted to expedite this spring.
Okay.
But absolutely, every season will be up there. Once we, I mean, sometimes, the head coaches, we know better and earlier than others, but sometimes we are literally filling those positions for JV and freshman teams days before.
Okay.
We try to avoid that, but sometimes, but every single coach of every single level will be up there every single season.
That'll be great, and I really appreciate that. And I wanted to find out what the committee thought about not having the email for those not-paid coaches, so those volunteer but have gone through the process of being hired. My experience is those coaches have been present and are considered coaches for those kids. Oftentimes, it's already an employee in this, you know, it has been, in my limited experience has been an employee already here. But as a parent who entrusts my children to a coach, I would want to know who that is, and so I don't know if there's an issue with assigning, like, what the barrier is to assigning them a Long Meadow email here, is it, that they're, and if they don't need an email, I would like to at least see their name.
We can list their names.
Okay.
I just, we could, we, I mean, if that's, we can, we're happy to list their names.
And I guess that's, I guess that's just, you know, if they're not supposed to be contacting the players, then I guess they wouldn't need an email, but I'd like to see, you know, their name.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Stephanie, I, that's, that raised my concern a little bit, that we have, you know, folks who are interacting with our student athletes who, you know, we don't even have their names or their, their contact information, so I think we might want to, not today, but at some point, throw that around a little bit more about the K-12 email or their own email, you know, I don't want to delve into it today, but there has to be a way for parents and student athletes to contact those people as well.
I'll, I'll leave that to you guys, we can definitely get their names up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Russ?
I'll just throw a different perspective. I know coaching, I would not want the volunteers to have an email because I want it to come through me or the assistant coach, but not, because, so, well, let me get into what I was going to say. So you and I had a pretty productive conversation, I think, a while back about the athletic program. You kind of filled me in on a lot of the stuff that's been going on, you know, positive things in the program, which I wasn't aware of. So I think there's a lot of things that really have been great. You know, there's good changes happening with the program. I think what, from my viewpoint, kind of as a school committee member, I think there's a couple of things that really triggered some of this conversation we've started. I think it's really quality of communication more than quantity.
Yeah.
So it's, it's how communication occurs between coaches or, or, you know, the department in general. It's just, it's something that I think everybody can work on. It's always difficult. My communication style is not the best always. But I think it's something, that's one area that could be worked on. I think overall, the coaches have a good reputation in town. I think they're, I think they're doing a good job. The athletic program is probably, you know, in the area and maybe the state, it's really, the number of teams we send to the playoffs, the number of teams that are successful, the number of teams that have kids that go on to college and play. I mean, all those things are great. I think what happens is you have a few teams where things maybe aren't great. And I think the surveys and all those things are going to help kind of narrow that to figure out where are the problems. And when I hear about those problems, it always seems to be communication issues. So it's not so much, I mean, you always hear the playing time and stuff like that. I mean, playing on teams, a lot of us have played on teams, a lot of us have coached teams. I know that's going to happen no matter what. Every single team has a playing time issue. But it's really more of the issues of the communication between a coach and parents or the coach and kids, or the kids' communication with the coaches. Sometimes the complaint is the coach is letting the kids run the team, for example, or they're, you know, saying things they shouldn't to the coach. And I'm not saying specific to our program, but just in general, that's one of the issues. So I think it's really that. I think overall, the program is probably, you know, the vast majority of the program, people love their coach. They love what's going on. But I think there's always, any program, ours included, there's always the exceptions. And I think some of the things you're doing right now are going to help, you know, you and probably the community figure out where are the weaknesses and where do we need to spend some time trying to figure out how to fix those. So I really commend you for this. I think that it's going to help going forward.
Yes, thank you. We want, we, we're dedicated to communication. We want to improve. There's no doubt about that. And we have the largest, we have the most successful, but I don't even want to focus on that. We have the largest sports program in Western Mass. And when you have something that large, you always can improve your communication and we're committed to it. Sports are always going to have their ups and downs. I say that's one of the things that we say at the, at the, you know, back to school fall night. You know, you really love the coach until you don't love the coach. And there are ups, there are downs. There, I mean, people go crazy in this country for teams that, where they don't even know the people, right? I mean, people act insane about sports at times. And then when you add the people that we love more than anybody else, our children, it can be combustible. The highs are really high and the lows can be tough. But, but I don't even know if I had, if you included that last, I sent it to you so late, you probably didn't even include it. But I had a quote that, that I kind of stole from all over, so it's not really my quote. But it was, I tried to, you know, how to finish. And it's, it's, sports are great. Sometimes they teach us a lot. They teach us about success. They teach about failure. They teach us about how to be on a team. They teach us about working really hard. And you show growth. Sometimes you work really hard and you don't win. Sometimes you work really hard and you, and you win. But teaches us about being, belonging to something greater than ourselves. And that's one thing that we say, yes, Long Meadow High School athletic programs are very, very successful. But even the athletes who are not individually successful are getting a lot out of it. And, you know, I don't have to tell you guys, you know that. But sometimes we, I think we focus too much on we have this much hardware and we have this many trophies and all that. And there's a pressure on teams that might not be super successful. And it's hard. It's hard at Long Meadow High not to, not to be a team that goes to the playoffs because it's more the, more the rule than the exception to do that. But our commitment is to make a good quality athletic experience for every student, whether they're playing a team sport or an individual sport, whether they're a senior captain, whether they're a ninth grade newbie. And it's not quite 80% last year, but just under 80% of our students played at least one sport. We've had years as many as 86% of playing at least one sport. That's amazing. And that's great. But we definitely want to make sure that it's a good experience. We can't control every situation, but we want to make sure that the pieces are in place and communication is effective.
Thank you. I know this is a topic everybody wants to talk about.
Can I just follow up on what Russ said?
Okay.
Just, just in terms of the question I posed to the committee about the emails and your, your thought that it, that the assistant shouldn't have an email. So I'm kind of thinking through my head, you know, how do we treat staff? You know, every staff member that we have has an email.
Assistant, I wouldn't. The volunteers, I wouldn't.
But the vol, okay, but the volunteers, this is where I'm, I'm trying to figure out. Volunteers have been hired, vetted, queried. So not having an email doesn't allow them to have communication from the coach through our system. I'm just trying to, I want...
Well, they have email. I'm just saying, don't put it on there for the parents to call them, email them directly.
But all of our staff have emails. So I just, I would like to feel that, that the kids, the people who are entrusted to, you know, that we entrust our kids to, parents know who they are. And I'm just trying to figure out why we wouldn't give them an email. Is it because they're not, they're like kind of quasi? What does a volunteer really mean? What do we allow our kids to, what do we expect of those volunteers? Are they never to be alone with our kids? Why wouldn't we give them an email? I just, I'd like to see those volunteer positions tightened up.
I think that's something that we have talked about doing in policy sub, but you, but we've also sent you a whole ton of things to do. But that is something, I think, the athletic department...
You want to see a policy on that?
There should be more discussion probably about volunteers because the ethics law in particular, but...
Yeah.
I think it's a bigger topic than just what you're going to do today. So let's table that and...
But I was just talking about in terms of an email, but you're thinking it, the email is tied into a bigger issue with volunteers. Okay. But a name right now would at least feel good.
We can absolutely...
Let's put the names up and we'll hold on the discussion at all for the email and we'll, we'll put that to a, to a subcommittee of some sort. I'm going to just go in this direction since we started from there. And I'm going to ask two quick questions. First, echo everything that's already been said from Stephanie and Russ. Thank you so much for all of your hard work on this and for, you know, just taking the time to highlight what's already been done. Because again, I agree with you. I think it improves communication just for people to understand what's already out there and what's already been done. So thank you. That's great. My two, I guess, one question. Have you considered the survey, which looks excellent by the way, for the parents? Assuming that's going to all parents, not just the parents of the seniors?
No, that's going to all parents in the program.
Awesome.
Yep.
Have you considered piloting it for the spring, just so that like we can work out the kinks and have it rolling and in good form for next year?
We considered it. We decided against it for a couple of reasons. In terms of coaches in Mike's preseason and postseason meetings with him, the concepts are all being visited and revisited. Quite frankly, the LEA would have had a problem if we didn't. That's the most direct answer.
I understand.
We were going to do it in the spring and the LEA said, you should treat all coaches and all programs the same. You should start, you shouldn't do something in the middle of the year. I didn't want to get into a battle. That's, that's the most honest answer.
I can appreciate that. That's why I asked. I figured somebody had asked that question. It was already considered and I get that. So thank you. And the other thing is just on the topic of the athletic fees, I said this at the last meeting or at the meeting where we did approve the changes. I think it was a great start and I just want to put a plug out there. I think it's a big task and we looked at it in finance sub and talked with you a lot. But I think a working group or a task force that really looks at it from all different angles and stakeholders from the community involved, just to see where there are ways to decrease costs. You know, we're dealing with this puzzle of, you know, here's how much money we have and how do we distribute it. But like maybe there are ways that other people could bring to the table to decrease costs or to increase revenue in some way. You know, I've talked about potentially putting advertisements out on the field, you know, just to hear other people's views of it and stuff. Because we're constantly stuck with this pickle of we only have so much money and the fees are too high. And so, you know, I won't be here as a committee member. I'd love to volunteer from the community side, but I'd like to, to ask you to try to form a working group and really take a longer, deeper look into it. Because I think it was a great start, but there's definitely more I know that we can try to look at and, you know, from different angles. So those were my two plugs and thank you again. Echo everything that was already said. It was awesome. So I appreciate it. Melanie?
Okay. So I do have a few questions. And again, thank you for your comprehensive review, for your willingness to list the parents. I know that this is not easy. And for all the great improvements you've made so far, really. I think we're getting there. We're almost there. And I really, really appreciate that. Congrats on the baby boy and congrats on you coming home safely.
Welcome back Hannah. I look forward to hearing...
Thank you.
So hopefully most of these questions will have a yes or no answer. Just to follow up on...
Are you awake Tom?
I am.
Right. To follow up on the, the parent survey, when you said it would be made available, is it going to be sent out to them at the end of the season?
Sent out...
It's going to be on the website?
Nope, sent out directly.
Okay.
And I, I like Survey Monkey because it's, I know, we know the nuances of that with protecting the anonymity. I think there's some issues with Google Forms and anonymity. So I like that. But we're talking about that right now. But that's, that's the format we think we're going to do. But it'll be sent directly to them and then they would do it. They don't have to go and find it. It'll be sent directly to their email, parent email.
Okay. And then I just had a look at the, the student survey, the student athletic survey. And I do see here where it is open, I don't know if this is finalized, where it has been opened up to underclassmen. What grade are you currently in? Freshman sophomore, junior, what team? Have you decided yet whether you're going to open up to underclassmen? I guess I would just continue to advocate for that. And I get what you were saying about seniors feeling like they're leaving and they may be in a better position. But I also see seniors who are leaving and don't really have an interest in affecting change at that point. And also maybe are going on to play in college and may or might not want to, excuse me, rock the boat so to, so to say. And I, and most importantly, I think the underclassmen may have some valuable information. So anyway, I did see it on here so I didn't know if that was a go or not.
It's, so it's on, can we, can we pause one second just to dial in?
Yeah.
And I'll just, and we'll let her just listen.
Nope, no, please.
Oh geez, sorry. Oh Pierre, is everyone here? Here?
Yes. Okay. What do you think? Hello?
Hi. You're, you're listening into the athletic, the end of our athletic presentation and we're just going through the room with a couple of questions and answers. So we'll come back to you at the end if you want to just listen for now.
Okay.
Thanks Beth.
We need to announce the...
Beth Baron is joining us by remote participation. If we do take any votes, we will do them by roll call. Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
So Melanie, to answer your question, so we sent that out directly to all seniors. It asks if you are, what year you are, but we would be, we know that they're seniors on that one because that's, that's an amalgamation of best practices. And we took and we borrowed. We looked at a couple of area high schools. We looked at a couple of areas, high schools out east. So we borrowed those questions, but we, this year, we sent it to seniors. We've had a lot of dialogue. Not just for, not just for, because it's an exit interview like we do with our, with our seniors, when, you know, we give blue sheets to all our seniors who are leaving. And, you know, they do it with their guidance counselor. Not just because they have nothing to lose like an exit interview, but they also have perspective. I listen to opinions of people who have been in Long Meadow High for one day. But I do, I do put a little bit more credence into someone who's been there for four years rather, rather than three months. But we're having that dialogue. And I'm not, we're not opposed to doing that in the future. Actually, we were just talking about, should we do it for all 11th and 12th graders? You're still getting a bigger, you're getting a little bit more context of how it works. And, but we're having that dialogue right now. It's in the middle of the year, so it's...
Yeah, I think an upperclassman is a great consideration. Again, it gives you, it forces the opportunity to kind of even see some of the, you know, changes or improvements or enjoy the positive, you know, whatever it happens to be. Even, even a junior can see that through. Whereas, you know, when you're a senior, you really, you can affect change, but you really can't be part of it.
And I'm not opposed to the others, but those are the dialogues. That's the back and forth that we've had when we, when chatting with coaches and athletes.
Thank you for considering it. Captain's Council, I did not know what it was. So I do have a better understanding what that is now. But I guess I would just ask, do you meet in person with the captains each season or is it kind of email communication?
I don't let Mike talk about that because that's his effort.
We meet three to four times a season. Tomorrow's our first spring meeting, BTC, 7:00 AM. And it's just more of a open dialogue. They give me a season update, how the season's going. We talk about any issues, how to work them out, you know, you know, this captain on this team might have had an issue, how they work through it and things like that. We do some team building exercises. And just again, open that, that dialogue of, I'm here for the student athletes. Tom is here. We're all here for the student athletes. And that's, I want to hear their, their, their opinions. And that's what, pretty much what that's student...
Okay. I think that's great too. And I, yeah, I just wasn't sure if you were meeting with them or to write email or whatever. Okay. The pre and postseason meeting with coaches, is that like an actual evaluation or is just a note, kind of taking notes from year to year or whatever?
So, I mean, I think it goes back to the LEA. I don't think it can have an official eval unless it's negotiated into the contract. That's how I understand it, right? So it's more of a, I mean, I'm at practices and games and I take notes. And it's more of, we talk about what I saw, what they saw, and how can we improve to next year.
All right.
And I would, I would just add the best check and balance that we have in addition to those meetings. And again, I want to compliment our coaches. I want to acknowledge and, you know, reiterate what Russ says. We're lucky. We have overwhelmingly have great coaches. But the best thing that we have for checks and balances is we post every year. And we, and based on those conversations, Mike's observations, our observations, his preseason meeting, his postseason meeting, we make the decision whether it's right to bring that person back. In most cases overwhelmingly, we have great people. But that's the check and balance. That's the real evaluation at the end of the day. No matter what our contract says or doesn't say, that's really what, what it is. Whether we're going to bring that, whether that person brought great value and, and growth. No matter what happened in the season in terms of success or failure, that, you know, did that person, does that person get it? Do they run a good program? Do they, do they do all the things that we need them to do in 2018 as a coach?
Yeah. Okay. Then with regard to the policy, we did make a lot of updates and you had mentioned that the coaches sign off on that. I would just want to emphasize to make sure they know that the policy has changed. Because it, I mean, we've spent all year working on it. And I know like when I'm signing this release to go to the cafeteria to do the pep rally after this.
Right.
You know, I just signed it. You know, do I, did I read the full two pages of the disclosure?
Ella says to me, are you going to read the whole thing mom?
So, so in light of that, I, you know, sometimes coaches may just re-sign something just thinking, oh yeah, I've read this before. But we did change it this year with social media.
Yeah.
Just on a number front. So I guess just to make sure it's pointed out that it has been updated and make sure you're...
Right. And the coaches, I mean, for every employee, including coaches, we, the sexual assault awareness was added. So we encourage them to know what they're signing. That's why I think that the, I think they're going, you know, Mike going over the, the parent survey before the season to say, this is what parents are going to be given after the season. Again, set everyone up for success is what we're, what we're trying to do.
Okay. Last one. Something Mike and I had talked about after one of the season. And again, just to enhance communication and streamline, you know, regarding streamlining the registration process. I know I was, I had an issue with this because I made an error in registering, you know, my daughter. So Mike and I had talked about where there is an error in registration. The students were the only ones receiving a communication that there was an error made. So in other words, parents were getting emailed to register their child. They were, you know, filling out everything, paying the money, getting feedback on whether or not you, you know, the processes, you know, did you do this? Did you do that? So, in other words, parents were getting emailed to register their child, they were, you know, filling out everything, paying the money, getting feedback on whether or not you, you know, the processes, you know, did you do this, did you do that? But when there was a flaw in it, when something was missed, only the child was informed, hey, you missed this. So, children aren't always good about looking at email. This could happen over, you know, a holiday break, which I believe was the case. Or kids may forget to pass that information on, you know, to parent. And I know for me personally, and other parents, it ended up that the children were not able to try out. We were there, ready, just ready to go, and were told your paperwork, you know, was not completed. So, Mike and I, you know, talked about it, and I just asked that that be a consideration made, that when there is a glitch in this, it is a great process, I've been around for 10 years.
Yeah.
So, I will say it's a great streamlined process, but just that last thing, that if there is some little glitch that falls through it, and in this case, it was myself, I'll be the first to admit, it can be consequential for the kids who are there, ready, ready, you know, to go and not able to show that date.
I'm going to answer, but fill me in if I'm wrong.
So, I just hope that, you know, that that would be made...
Because I think, I agree.
Either a CC to parent and the child, or to both, or to the parent.
That's an easy fix, just to make sure that the email goes to the parent.
So, we tweaked it, correct me if I'm wrong. So, you're right, you have to have, you have to be signed up, you have to register, you have to have that, you have to have that, the physical in, you know, parents, you know, and kids can get upset, but if you go out there and something happens and you don't have a physical, we'll all be regretting it.
Right.
So, that's, so we're strict on that. But I think, because I know the situation you're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, you tweaked it a little bit this year, mid-year, but didn't you say, if, you sent it out to parents and said, if your child's name is on here, you're all set. If your child's name is not on here, there's an issue. Am I wrong on that?
No, you're right.
Okay. So, that was a change this year.
Okay. Yeah, see, I didn't, we're not playing spring sports, so I wasn't able to follow up on that, so thank you.
So, that was the, that was, that was, that was an adjustment.
Yeah.
It's an improvement.
Just some check and balance.
Yep. Rather than, to try to say, rather than say, these people still need things, these people are okay. If you see your son or daughter's name, you are good to go. If you don't see your son or daughter's name, dig in and find out what else she needs.
Perfect, that's fine. That's, that's all fair enough for accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Jess?
I think it would be ideal if we can add in the parents' emails Melanie suggested as well, so that if, as she said, if there are missing pieces, that, that last piece that you mentioned...
Yeah, you have three emails this spring, parents directly.
To a school messenger.
So, so, I think if I understand what Melanie's saying, only her, and, and, just to use Melanie as an example...
Right.
Because she's not the only one, but only the daughter received the final email that her registration wasn't complete.
In the winter, correct.
So, I'm saying, can we add that parent email on?
Yeah.
It seems like an easy fix.
That's what we...
It's already been fit.
So, it's done. It's done. Okay.
But we didn't do that in the first part of the year.
Okay.
So, we're building up for spring, based on a couple instances.
Got it, got it.
Yours being one.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I think it's improved, I think it's an improved approach.
Good. Thank you. And thank you. Quickly, I'll try to be as fast as I can, just reiterating the gratitude to you guys for all of the thought that you put into trying to improve the athletic program. I love the surveys, I agree that we need to cast a broader net with the students. I absolutely think that we need to reach freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors. I realize that's a lot of incoming information to manage, but I still, I'm going to put that out there. I love the survey, thanks to Erin and Christine, I believe you said, they were the ones who put it together with you.
I put it together, and they were, they were there through the whole time. They were feeding, they were sounding board, they were insightful and helpful, and I bounced things off, and they were great.
That's great. And both of, both of whom are parents that are, been very involved in athletics, and I know they won't be offended if I just add a suggestion to take it or leave it. Number four, I would love to see the word "good" inserted before "sportsmanship." Again, these are just suggestions, take them or leave them. And then, I would love to see something, another sentence saying something along the lines of, the coach created a positive supportive environment for student-athletes and was a positive role model. Something along those lines, just to really lay it out there. But I think this is a good start. And I think you said it's an anonymous survey, and you're working to ensure the anonymity of it?
Yeah, I think, I think SurveyMonkey is the way to go to do that.
Okay.
We use that for a lot of our, there might, there's some other things, formats we're talking about that do the same thing. We use SurveyMonkey, it's great, it's simple, and it's anonymous.
So, that sort of segues to my concern about anonymity. We've, we've had some, a lot of anonymous feedback over the course of this year as a committee, and...
Yes, you have.
About, about the athletic department, and a lot of, we've all had a lot of direct communication with parents about, about the athletic program. Lots, as we said, lots and lots of positive things going on, but one of the overarching themes that I hear, and I see my role on the school committee as somebody who is elected to speak up on behalf of the parents who aren't here, sitting at the table.
Right.
And so, I've spoken to a lot of parents who participate in athletics, and the overarching concern is the approachability of the athletic department and that communication. And I think that putting things in place in terms of surveys and meetings and that sort of thing is awesome. But when you're talking about cultural shift, it's really big. And I think parents are not feeling heard, they're not feeling like there's two-way respect and communication from the athletic department, and they're afraid to speak up about their concerns, and they say some of their, that their kids are afraid to speak up. I'm saying the elephant on the table here, we have all heard this, all, you know, all school committee members, and I'm not, you know, trying to put you on the spot or needing a response from you, but I do feel a responsibility to, to say that out loud, to say we are absolutely, this is great, we're making progress, but we have a lot of work to do to make sure parents are feeling respected, feeling heard, day-to-day, not, you know, not just through sort of the process of an anonymous survey, but just day-to-day interactions. And I'm also very happy to see that we are looking at ways to create more oversight for, for coaches and for staff who are coaching, who are not officially employees of our school district. So, that's very reassuring, that there's more presence there. And then, the last little bit, I would just, I'm just going to put in a little plug for the, I think, Mike, you mentioned the captains' meetings are 7:00 a.m. You know, the, the, we're looking at high school start time, we're looking at gobs and gobs of research about kids getting sleep, so I would put in my own plug that, you know, can you possibly make those captains' meetings with kids at lunch? Can you sit down with them during lunchtime, or during their ice blocks? Again, not looking for, you know, direct feedback necessarily right now, but I would love for those kids to be able to get that critical sleep that we know they need biologically in the morning, and then still be able to give feedback to, to Mike and to the athletic department. But again, just to, to wrap everything up, I, I hope you can appreciate why I share the things that I share, and I am very grateful to both of you for your hard work in improving all of these things.
Yeah, you're welcome. And we are, look, I've worked at, I've had the pleasure of working at Long Meadow High School for 13 years. One of the great things about this community is that parents are involved and supportive. I could not work at a better school in terms of that it is more proactive, or appropriately responsive. I completely, I've heard from, for years, parents coming in, I need to tell you this about the math teacher, I need to tell you this about the English teacher, you know, don't use my name, I'm afraid for retribution. We've heard it about coaches. My experience, Jess, and to the whole committee, has been, I understand that, I get that, that's not a Long Meadow thing, but my experience has been, when parents come forward and complain, yeah, there's awkwardness. I think the word "fear" has been misused. I think that people have, you know, to be fair, some of my interactions with parents, I think there's awkwardness when you complain. There is, you can't ignore that, you can't make that go away. But I have never had a situation where, whether it be a teacher or a coach, when a parent came forward, or I went forward, or Mike went forward, where there was any, there was reason for awkwardness, because you can't avoid that in life, but true fear, that's a strong word. I think we do a good job, I think we try to listen, we get, I probably get, we've experienced more complaints about athletics than academics in my 13 years. And again, I think that goes back to the highs and lows and the great emotion, the fact we love our children, and sports are great until they're not. When a child gets cut, when a child doesn't get playing time, that's tough, that hurts. I have children. I've made some teams, I started on some teams, I was cut from some teams. But I, we are committed to having the best experience for all student-athletes, without a doubt. I will, I will ask, and I wasn't going to raise it, but since, since the, you raised it, I would say, I would beg this school committee to reject anonymous letters. I've been the victim of smear this year, I've been the victim of gutless reckless letters. And I know that you guys are committed on your website not to, not to give credibility to, to those letters. But it felt this year like there was credibility given, credibility given to them. So, I would just ask us all, when I get, I get some, you know, old anonymous letters to principals and school committees and superintendents at Long Meadow are as old as dirt. They've always happened.
Yeah.
And they always will. But when I get one about a teacher, I will either recycle it, or if I think it's, if I think it's threatening to that teacher, or if I think it's dangerous, or I think it's a part of a larger puzzle that they might be, I would tell them. But that's different from saying, there's truth in here. And, you know, I know of three anonymous letters that the school committee received, and I got to tell you, they were filled with misinformation. And I would just ask, because I know it's tough, and I know it's tough when you get them, but I would ask, and I'm asking on camera, that you reject those, and that you don't take them, and that you say, we're going to recycle them. Because you're good people, you have open doors, we're good people, we have open doors, we don't bite. We may agree, we may disagree, but we will listen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think...
I promise you, we will listen.
I don't think the anonymous letter situation is that, is that simple from sitting where I'm sitting, when I'm getting feedback, and the school committee, as you know, we don't accept anonymous letters and say, oh, hey, this is true. I mean, every single thing is cross-checked, fact-checked, looked into, and it should be. It absolutely 100% should be looked into. I have an obligation, if I'm receiving concerning feedback, whether it's anonymous or not, I need to make darn sure that whatever's stated in that letter is not going on. And there were facts in those letters that were true.
Well...
So, well, I'm going to finish.
Right. I will, too.
So, I 100% appreciate what you're saying about your own personal experience, because it was negative, and it was a lot of untrue, hurtful, and harmful things. But there are a lot of actual legitimate facts that came out of that, and as a committee, we have a responsibility to vet that, and to cross-check, and to make sure that those facts are true or not true, when they, when they are received by us, when they are put in our mailboxes. So, that is part of our duty and our responsibility, in my opinion. So, that's what I have to say about that.
I hear you.
And when I talked about fear before, Tom, I just want you to know that, you know, you are a 100% approachable, personal guy. It's not, when I use the word "fear," it's not a reflection of you, or judgment of you. It's just a word that's been used by parents and students that I'm sharing with you, not in a negative way. But again, I'm here to represent parents and students in our district. So, all I'm doing with the word "fear" is sharing it with you as a, as a word that has been used multiple times.
Sure.
So, yeah.
And I, and I hear you.
With all due respects to you.
No, and I, I hear you. I guess I would, I would finish with two things. One, I want to acknowledge one thing about letters, and then just finish hopefully on a positive note, because I think they're, I think that I'm so proud of being part of LHS and the LHS Athletic Program. Because I will defend it, and I will be proud of it, even though all institutions can improve, and I, we're dedicated to that. But one of the aspects of judging the credibility of a letter is the source of that letter, and by definition, an anonymous letter has no way to judge the credibility. So, I don't want to get into too much, but there's no way, when, when we judge the person in front of us and say, okay, does, you know, does this person have a axe to grind? Do they have this? Are they credible?
No, we can fact-check, though. We can fact-check, yeah.
And that's just something, I, you know, I hear what you're saying, and I just wanted to say that as well.
That's all we do, is fact-check.
And, and in terms of the athletic program, like I said when I started, it's, it's, it's a great, it's not a good athletic program, it's a great athletic program. Doesn't mean we can't be creative. Doesn't mean we can't improve, it doesn't mean that, you know, I hope that today and this entire year has been evidence that we listen, and we're reflective, and we are always trying to improve. I think that that's what, if, if that doesn't come through, I...
100% does. Yeah, 100% comes through.
Great. Because that's what, that's what we want to, that's what we're committed to, whether it be academics, or athletics, or music, or art, or anything else that goes on at the high school. And I'm fortunate to be a part of that high school.
Thank you.
Everyone's so eager to talk, I know, and Karen hasn't had a chance yet, so thank you, thank you. And even if we have to agree to disagree, I think we should, you know, keep moving so we all get home today.
And I promise I will be brief. Thank you. I do want to say thank you, this is fantastic. And, and Tom, I really want to also say thank you for your frankness and your honesty, it is so refreshing to hear. And I appreciate that, because I think it makes for a great discussion.
Yeah.
And I think what you guys have done this year is amazing, and it's huge, giant steps, not baby steps, giant steps forward. And I was going to ask a question, it's going to be really brief.
That's all right.
Because all my other questions have been answered, but just as far as the parent survey, I'm just curious, as someone who doesn't have high school kids yet, this information is super helpful. So, as far as the parent survey, can you just walk us through what you'll, how you'll get that information, and then what you'll do with it? You know, logistically, and...
Sure. So, our plan is to, you directly email through the format, like I said, I think SurveyMonkey, but something that's completely anonymous. We get it back, and Mike, Lisa Estradios, and myself will go through that. So, somebody mentioned, you mentioned Steph, Lisa Estradios. So, we have, God bless my assistant principals, because they have about 1,000 things each, but we compartmentalize, and I was in that role as an AP for nine years. So, Lisa Estradios's current position is many things, she's in charge of everything from MCAS to, you know, other things, but she is by, by her title, in charge, ultimately in charge of athletics. Because you hope that, you would hope that they talk to a coach. And then, if it doesn't go well there, they talk to Mike, if it doesn't go well there, they talk to Lisa or me. But I have an open door, and Lisa has an open door, and Mike has an open door, but we, it goes to her, so she is by title, part of that process. There always should be due process, next step, and we recognize that. So, I mean, Lisa and I don't get too hung up, if I'm free, I'll take it, if she's free, she'll take it. But she's the next step in there. So, it's me, Lisa, and Mike would go through that, and we look at that, and you, you take that as part of the puzzle and part of the, the feedback. Mike's observations, Mike's pre- and postseason meetings, anecdotes, Mike is on the sidelines all the time, I'm on the sidelines in the playoffs, which is almost every season at I'm on the sidelines in the playoffs, which is almost every season at LHS, in every sport. So our observations, and you put it all together, and you look at it. The same thing with the student surveys. It's Mike, it's me, and it's Lisa. And we look at that, and you put that as part of the overall package, and you put it, take it all into account.
And then just a final comment.
And, I'm sorry, the last part would be, that information would be shared with the coach. I mean, that's the last piece. And it doesn't mean that we necessarily even agree with all parts of it, or the coach will, but he or she deserves that feedback too.
Right.
So that would be kind of closing the loop on that part.
Right. And I think what you've set up here is hopefully a culture shift that will lead to less anonymous letters that we don't have to deal with.
Exactly.
We have the feedback. So hopefully, and I think we're also doing that in other areas besides athletics, we're, you know, adding it to some of our policies too. So I think that, you know, hopefully we will create this culture of communication so that parents don't feel like they have to go that route.
Right.
And I think this is a great step towards that.
Yeah. That's what we're committed to. I don't know if we'll ever stop the high emotions of sports, but you want to do the best job you can do.
Yeah.
Given them an outlet, I think it's at least an outlet for parents, though.
Thank you. I agree. I know Marty wants to speak, but I have Beth here, and she's on a time. So Beth, do you have anything that you want to ask of Tom or Mike, or comment on?
I'll just comment briefly. I was cleaning up stuff, and I go when I heard, I missed part of the call, so I didn't get the full presentation, and I don't have the survey in front of me, but I just want to echo the appreciation I have for Tom and Mike, listening to them and knowing that we are making this progress. And I totally agree with Tom, it was such an emotional heated issue when you deal with athletics. And I think in our town in particular, our kids are driven, and they're competitive in the classroom, and that naturally carried over onto the field. So we do have a large number of student athletes, and we certainly want to be coding for the best program to benefit all of them. The only, the thing that I'd like to point out that I did hear, I hear a little bit of Mike, but not as much, the mic wasn't picking up as much, but I do know, I just want to say that Mr. Capitazzo, that he has been very easy to get a hold of, and he has been trying to schedule a meeting, and I do look forward to sitting down with him, because I do, I'm going to go through all these little things right now, but I do, as a parent of student athletes, I feel like I get approached very often, and not, I'm not saying these are complaints, but I do have a list of questions that people are asking, and they're just very, some of them are very easy things, and I will look forward to sitting down with him and seeing if some of the things, you probably can just check the box and, you know, rectify, or get an answer to. But I do appreciate the time on the survey. I think that we are making progress, and a culture shift is desperately needed, and I think that we will reach a point where people feel, I like Tom saying that he's got the open door policy, and for parents to hear that, and students to hear that, and know that going forward, that everyone's approachable, and situations will be handled and deal with, dealt with effectively. The surveys will be looked at, I'm hoping that whatever we gleaned from that, that information can be used to assess or have productive conversations. I think in the past, athletics only had problematic coaches, whether it be verbally abusive or physically abusive, that kind of thing is dealt with, looks like a parent issue to remove a coach. And I certainly would never want to get to that point where we have to deal with a coaching matter that way with parents. I think I put my full trust and respect in Mike and Tom to be able to assess the coaches. I see them on the sideline, I know that that's happening. So I'm encouraged that we're really doing all the right things to put the best program in place.
Thank you. Like I said at the beginning, thanks, Beth. I think that the LHS Athletics Program, it's been, you know, successful in large for years, but I have, I'm in my fourth year as a principal, Mike's in his, you know, sixth year, he's been AD for five and a half, I've been principal for three and a half. There have only been four ADs in the history of Long Meadow High School, believe it or not. And I got to tell you, there's more transparency than ever, there's more effort at communication. We're not perfect. Sports can be, you know, like you said, athletic dialogues can be highly charged, but we're committed to doing the right thing. The answer won't always be yes, but you should, you deserve an answer, and you deserve an open door, and we're committed to doing that. I certainly, I can say, as working with three different athletic directors, you know, it's not an easy job. Mike does a good job, and he always has the student athlete at front and center when he's making decisions, and we close the door, and we agree, and sometimes we disagree, but we're always thinking and trying to do what's best for the student athlete. So we'll keep doing that, I promise.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Okay. Thanks, Beth, and we're going to move to Marty.
Very briefly, just in terms of the anonymous reporting, I want to circle back to something I mentioned at your last meeting. We are investigating an online reporting tool that would allow parents, community members, students, staff to report things that they see, if it's sort of an immediate threat to someone's safety, that doesn't fall into the 911 sort of category, or if they're, feel that someone might be a threat to themselves. So that's ongoing. We actually just talked about it today at our administrative meeting, so we hope to bring that forward at some point. And I think that might provide another sort of venue for the types of issues that Tom and Jess were talking about. And then secondly, and, you know, I think we can all help each other build bridges in this situation, that if we're aware of parent concerns, we want to be sure that we're getting back to the committee on those things. And similarly, if you're aware that there are parents out there that have concerns, if you're in a position to put those parents in touch with us, I think that's always very, very productive, and we appreciate that. That helps us build bridges to the folks that you're talking to in the community. And then our obligation is to circle back to you and make sure you're fully aware of any concerns that we're hearing. So I think hopefully working together, we can build those bridges.
Thank you. Okay. Now I'll go back, if anybody has a few more brief, Russ?
Yeah, so the anonymous letter, I agree with you, actually, I think that those are not something that, unless it's something really, you know, like you get anonymous bomb threats, you know, those type of things are different.
Sure.
However, I've told you and Marty, that the parents that have come to me directly, I've relayed the information as far as what those complaints were, not the playing time things, that type of thing, but some of the other things, you know, comments and whatever behavior. And I think those, to me, are really what I'm referring to. So the anonymous complaints, I don't, you know, those are, can't verify who gave it to us, we can't verify if the person's credible or not, we can't verify if it's a playing issue, or it's a star kid. But some of the other things that have come to us, I mean, my general approach is to get it to you and Marty, and then you two can get it to Mike and move forward. But I guess the question, I can see that you're clearly on board. I mean, Mr. Capitazzo, are you clearly on board? Because I'm not, in this meeting, I'm kind of getting the impression that maybe you're not.
On board with what?
Body language. As far as the changes, are you okay with these?
Well, I mean, these changes didn't happen overnight, they've been happening for six years. I mean, I take my job very serious.
Yeah.
You trust me to do my job. I go out and evaluate, and I talk to other high school area ADs, get their input, I talk to Tom, I talk to Lisa. I am on board, I love it here, I want to work here, I want to continue to work here. Trust me to do my job, where I'm going to do what's best in terms of student athletes. I am on board 100%. I just think there's, you know, we go back to the anonymous letters and stuff, I don't know, I've probably had 30, 35 complaints in my five and a half years, and a lot of it did boil down to playing time, and what level their son or daughter did make, but when an issue comes forward about language, about demeanor on the sideline, I take that very serious. I mean, if I don't know about it, I am out there a lot. I am out in practice fields, I am out on game fields. I don't hear everything, I don't see everything. So, yes, parents need to come forward with some things, but then it's our job to decide, yes, this didn't happen, or no, this didn't happen. So I am on board 100%. I mean, I just, I think I'm frustrated a little bit with some of the things that were said today, because it makes it sound like it was all changed this year.
Right.
Every year, I evaluate, I'm trying to evaluate, trying to make it better. So it didn't happen overnight. It's every year we're trying to improve this.
The irony is, Mike has, you know, most of those things, and we had a good chat when we talked, but most of those overwhelmingly, I want to say all, but almost, mostly all of those were Mike's doings. But Mike Dearie, who is a longtime director here, athletic director, would make a great point. And I wasn't going to say this, but I will, I get to see positives. You know, as a principal, even vice principals at Long Meadow High, because our school and community is so good, you get to experience the positives. Very often, an athletic director, very often a parent who is upset will go to the athletic director. That's just the nature of the job. It's not Long Meadow, it's America today. If it's positive, you go to the coach, if it's negative, you go to the athletic director, it's part of the job. But I certainly wanted to let him answer, but he has been the moving force behind those changes. And those changes didn't happen, as he said, and you know that, they didn't happen just this year. Yeah, there's three or four good things happening this year, but there's been about five or six things happening every year, and, I mean, we didn't even post jobs yearly until Mike came on. We didn't have a formal pre- and postseason meeting until Mike came on. We didn't have a, we didn't even think about a captain's council until Mike came on. But, you know, we're here to do the best job we can.
Thank you. Any other questions or feedback? Thank you very much for the time-
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Happy spring, thanks for having us.
All the prep that went into us. You bet. Thank you.
All right. And good luck to all our sports teams.
Yes.
Season is underway.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving to our last business with guests. I'm so sorry for the extended wait. We have our food service contract on the agenda. Tom, do you want to take that for me?
Thank you.
So Beth Nelson is here, and Chris Ferrero from Cafe Services. So in your packet is a memo that I submitted in regards to kind of a summary of the process that the review committee went through when we were required to go out to bid our food service program. Vendor provider, under USDA regulations, after five years, you are required to do a formal request for proposals, which we are in our fifth year with our current vendor. So the memo kind of outlines the steps that were taken. The RFP was advertised in mid-February. There was a mandatory pre-bid conference at the beginning of March. Submission of any interested vendors was in mid-March. Vendors of the review committee, which consisted of Jen Matthews, Liz Bone, Nicole Allen, Beth Nelson, Michelle Grodsky, and myself, reviewed the technical proposals, and then we had presentations from the two vendors that submitted a proposal. Those presentations occurred on March 29th, and then we did a site visit on April 9th up to Brattleboro to view the Cafe Services operation at two of their schools. And then a recommendation was made based on all of the information that was reviewed. So I think we've made a lot of progress over the last five years with our current vendor, but we feel, I think there's still opportunities to continue to improve and move in the right direction. And I think we were impressed with what Cafe has proposed to bring forward in the program. So it is the recommendation of the review committee to award a contract to Cafe Services for next school year. The recommendation would be for a one-year contract with four renewals, which is the most you can do under USDA regulations. But Chris is here, so I know he would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any, as would I, or Beth, or Michelle. So let's try to keep it quick.
Absolutely, and maybe I'll just put my own plug in really quickly. I was so impressed. I missed the presentations, but I definitely went out to Brattleboro and got to see firsthand how they distribute the food, and it was, and got to taste the food and everything, and it was just overwhelmingly exciting, and we were all so impressed, and everybody was unanimous in the decision. So I fully support this contract and this proposal, and I'm excited to see how it works out. So we do have a motion, it's on the, why don't we start with the motion? If anyone has any questions or comments, we can go from there. Anyone want to make it?
I'll make it. I move on the recommendation of the Food Service RFP Review Committee to award a contract to Fresh Picks Cafe, a division of Cafe Services, for the 2018-2019 school year, and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the school committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Russ. Any questions, discussion related to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? And abstained?
Do we need a roll call?
Oh, yes, we do, thank you. Thank you.
Karen Moore and I.
Any interest?
Thank you, Beth.
Jessica Hutchins, abstained. Melanie Grossstein, aye.
Michelle Grodsky, aye.
Russell Dupree, aye.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
Okay, thank you, the motion passes.
Beth Behren, aye.
Oh, sorry, Beth, I'm sitting right next to the phone, too.
We need to put a little picture-
You are, yes, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Okay, so-
I want to make sure Diane got it.
Diane, you got everybody? Thank you. I should go out. Okay, thank you, Beth. Thank you so much, really excited. Is there anything that you want to say, or?
Yeah, just, on behalf of everybody at Cafe Services, we'd just like to thank you for this invitation to partner with your community, and I as well think it's going to be a great thing, I think. There's, we see a lot of opportunity here to do some really great stuff, and we're really excited about it. So thank you very much for this.
Thank you. Beth, do you want to have anything to add, or?
I echo everything you said.
Thank you. Okay. All right, great, thank you so much, have a great day. And, all right. Moving backwards in our agenda, we are now on the policy, ongoing business, policy for approval. Stephanie, do you want to?
Well, the substance use verbal screening was posted, looks like there wasn't any input, and we have a motion on the table.
On the paper, anyone want to move?
I can move.
Sure.
I move that the school committee adopt policy JLCE, substance use verbal screening as presented.
Second. Okay, motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will do a roll call vote.
Karen Moore and I.
Jessica Hutchins, aye. Melanie Grossstein, aye.
Beth, this is you now.
Beth Behren, aye.
Michelle Grodsky, aye.
Russell Dupree, aye.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Next, we will move on to administrative reports. Marty?
No report, it'll take the form of the evaluation report.
Okay. Great, I do not have a chair report at the moment. We do not have a student rep report, anything else from, okay, we can move on. There is no finance subcommittee report, policy, do you have a? Nope, we didn't. Okay. Operations sub did not meet any other reports, LPVC, CO, Fu Services, we just handled. Okay, moving right along. We are on the superintendent end of cycle report on goals and performance standards. And Marty, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure, thank you. So, do I recite from it, or?
I just need the quick, but if you-
Okay. So, maybe the, I made it the FADAS packet, school committee packet of the year for you, the most papers, but hopefully it's helpful and informative, and it helps you make an informed judgment as you prepare to do the annual superintendent's evaluation. I want to sort of accomplish two things. One is to sort of orient you to the materials I sent you, to make sure you understand how it was organized, and second, just to give you a bit of a flavor for what might be, what you might want to reflect on as you prepare for the evaluation. So this is the evaluation cycle that I think you're familiar with, and that certainly is familiar to all of our educators and all of our administrators. This is the Massachusetts DESI evaluation cycle, and so we're at the, at sort of the 10:00 PM stage here, where we're engaged in the summative evaluation. You recall that the goals and the plan was developed back in the fall, and ultimately approved by the school committee. So at the most, you know, basic level, it might be helpful for you to think about all the forms that you received as having three components. One is where you have to evaluate my progress towards the goals that we agreed upon. The second is your assessment of my performance against the four standards for superintendent leadership. And then from that, you would arrive at a summative performance rating individually, and then ultimately a summative performance rating as a committee. So I just want to touch on number one and number two, and orient you to the artifacts in report I provided to you that hopefully demonstrate that I've made significant progress toward the goals, and that I have met your performance expectations on the standards. So the components, the goal components, so we're on number one here, there were three components, a professional practice goal that related to communication and engagement with the community. Second, the student learning goal related to inclusive practice, and then third, the development of an actionable district improvement plan. So let me just stop there for a moment and take you to some of the artifacts. Excuse me one second. Sorry. It's not cooperating here. Let's do it this way. So I'll start with the evidence of goal attainment. So you have in your packet this cover sheet, and it, the beginning of it states the goal in all of its verbiage, and then the black bullets that you'll see are the indicators of success. Now those indicators were outlined back in the fall, so that's not new information. What represents the artifacts on this is the bullets that are in sort of outline form. And so for each indicator, I provided perhaps a brief narrative, but also some artifacts, which is evidence essentially, some evidence of my attainment of the indicator. which is evidence essentially, some evidence of my attainment of the indicator. So again, there's a lot of sort of evaluation verbiage we're throwing around here, but I just wanted to make sure that we're familiar with it. So one of the indicators was, in terms of our work with families, was putting together a K-8 handbook. Now, I would describe this, I have described this as an ambitious undertaking. We have, focusing K-8 for now, and we may eventually be able to move in the direction of a K-12 student handbook, but kind of want to be reasonable in what we can accomplish in a year. So we have been working on putting together a K-8 handbook. And this would be a way, I hope, of us working smarter rather than harder, that if we can capture all of our school sort of legal policies in one handbook for our five schools below grade nine, that we think will be more aligned in our work, our administrative work. And we think that we'll be in a better position to renew the handbooks annually. So rather than doing the same thing five times, we potentially could put ourselves in a position to do it one time. Now, there is a, there is a district-wide code of conduct, which I will be frank with you, has been, it has sat in cyberspace, but it hasn't been a tool that we have used to engage families. So we're kind of going to take the best out of that and sort of reshuffle it and package it up as a K-8 handbook. So again, when you get the electronic document, you can click on any of the links. And so here, this is just a, I would even describe it as a sort of a pre-draft. This is sort of our first shot at putting together this sort of K-8 code of conduct. And you'll see, just by looking at the table of contents, some of the examples of the things that we want to include in there relating to rules and regulations, parent rights, student rights, key laws and policies, that kind of thing. So we've got some work to do, but we hope that it will be ready for you at your May 9th meeting.
Marty, can I just talk for a second? Are you using that handbook and code of conduct terms interchangeably?
So I think I, that's a great question, because I think I've confused our administrators on that. So I'm using them interchangeably. And so what I think the end product will be, will be a K-8 code of conduct slash handbook, right? But then there'll be five separate sort of school family guides. You know, that will, that will include the things that are very school-specific about car line and lunch line and cafeteria and pick-up and drop-off and that kind of thing. So I apologize for that, but yes. So I think we're moving towards the phrase handbook. Seems to be a more parent-friendly phrase, I'd say. So you can go through this document, and I won't click on everything, but you can see the artifacts that I've laid out that provide evidence that I've met the indicator. So, you know, I could just pick on anything here.
Can I get some clarification? Just on that same question about the code of conduct? So it sounds like what's in the handbook right now, you're looking at moving to a family guide and just taking our policies and putting them in a code of conduct?
I'd say it's both. So, so right now, right now, we have school-based family information intermixed with policies and legal notices and that kind of thing.
In the handbooks.
In the, in the handbooks, especially at the elementary level. Middle school, different story. So, but the idea would be to capture all of the legal notices, the student rights and responsibilities information, the information for students with disabilities, to capture that in a single document. That would apply to all five schools below grade nine. Does that make sense?
So it's just policies?
So it's not a handbook? It's more of a code of conduct we're moving to?
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'm not, I don't want to get, I wouldn't want to get too hung up on the code of conduct versus handbook. I see handbook as including code of conduct language, how students should conduct themselves, but it also might include notices about student records, for example. Or it might include notices about what to do if you have to file a complaint. Might include things about who our Title IX officer is, things like that. So all of that stuff would be in a handbook that would also include some general cross-school code of conduct information. So for example, information relating to suspensions and expulsions, that language is common to all of our schools. There's no reason to have that in five different places for five different schools. We can capture that in one place efficiently. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So all we have is the code of conduct right now? That's what we're looking at?
Correct. There is an existing code of conduct, but I will, again, being frank with you, that code of conduct has not been annually updated and reviewed appropriately. Does that make sense? So again, you can click on any of these links to identify or to pull up information. So I'm sure you're all big viewers of my Superintendent's Corner, right? This is a blockbuster hit on local cable access television. But this is something I started up this year, and we've had four episodes. I'm taping another one tomorrow. I hope to have six by the end of the year. So this was one that I did with the Chiefs back in, I think it was December. It was a lot of, they're fun to do, good communication tool, and they're a good way to reach non-LPS parents because they run on LCTV. And so we get some feedback occasionally from senior citizens or other community members on it. So, so again, you know, in terms of the parent and community engagement, there's a, there's a bunch of examples here that represent information that we put out to the community as a way to keep them informed and engaged. You know, this was a, let's see, some of it's just in raw form. This was the, this is a screenshot of the press release I put together in the wake of Parkland. And I wouldn't expect you to read all this. It's more just to jog your memory of the things that we've been involved with this year. It's been a, it's been a really busy, productive year. In terms of that first goal, I'd highlight, you know, one of the things I think I'm most proud of is the Drug-Free Communities Award. And again, this is just, it's supposed to be an artifact, it's supposed to be evidence. So this is the federal award that we received for the Drug-Free Community Grant back in September. Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year for five years. I think it's going to have a major effect on this community. I believe that one of the reasons that we were successful in this is the coordination that we had as a school district with that close community coalition. So again, I won't click on every link here. If there's something you'd like me to pull up, let me know.
I'm just going to interrupt you for a second, because I know Beth needs to go. Beth, was there anything real quick you wanted to ask Marty or comment on before you go?
No, I had an opportunity to really look at it. He's right, that's a really thick packet. So I have been able to look through it, and I will go, I'll touch base with you guys, and I'll watch the rest of them, and then if I have any follow-ups, I'll reach out to Marty and ask questions. But I appreciate all of the documentation for us to be able to look through and the explanation behind it. But I am going to get back to work at Dino's.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, Beth.
Take care.
All right. Go have a good day. Bye.
Okay.
There we go. The second goal of my annual plan related to inclusive practice. And then you'll see, again, you'll see the indicators, and then the blue links. And some of the verbiage represents some of the progress that we've made. You know, one of the, one of the items relates to culturally responsive practice. And this is an artifact that demonstrates a training that we have for the administrators in August relating to culturally responsive teaching and leadership. So Ariel Nelson is a provider, professional development provider, who we have stayed engaged with as a way to promote cultural proficiency here in Long Meadow Public Schools. Administrators, all of our elementary specialists, and next year, we've arranged for her to present to every educator in the district. So those are some of the links relating to the goals. The third goal, again, if you had to ask me, what am I, you know, most proud of? I think it's our work pulling together a district improvement plan. Three goals, 21 objectives, 62 indicators of success, and it was a culmination of a lot of reflection, a lot of work with the school committee, a lot of work with our school councils and the administrative team. And so this, this artifact captures that. You know, it just shows in high-level form, you know, the results of that district improvement plan. These are all things you've seen before, but, well, I shouldn't say all, but most of these things you've seen before. Again, just to jog your memory. The second major document that you were sent is the evidence associated with the four So there are four DESI standards, and you'll see that I provided you with artifacts and evidence of how we met each standard. Whether it relates to, you know, sort of the nuts and bolts of management and operations, or relates to instructional leadership. There's a, there's a document here, an artifact that demonstrates the, it'll come up. This is a curriculum planning guide that, that we've worked on. This is a new document. It's, it's something that we put together with the New Curriculum Planning Council. So that's been a significant step forward for us in terms of curriculum alignment and my instructional leadership. And I would say, you know, and it's important to note, and I said this to the administrative team today, most of this work is not work that I do, right? It's work that I lead and manage and coordinate. But frankly, credit goes to the administrative team, to the principals that are really doing the heavy lifting on a lot of these things. But certainly, I've tried to bring coherence to it and tried to harness the work. Management operations, you'll see, again, there's about 10 artifacts there. Quite a few artifacts relating to family and community engagement. One of the things we're very proud of this year is this, this idea of creating a culture of awareness and began back in September, October, I think it was, when I attended the National Conference on Child Sexual Abuse Prevention. And it culminated in, so I was fortunate to go to that. I appreciate the committee's support of that. Culminated in bringing a full training to staff and a full training to parents as well on how we can protect kids' sexual safety. And it's become part of our mandated, mandatory training. And next year, again, every educator will experience some professional development from masked kids. I believe it's January we've lined up masked kids to come back to the district. So this is not something that is a one-hit-wonder thing. So again, you can click through these things. I hope you will. I hope you'll have an opportunity to look at the work products that we've had, and hopefully it demonstrates the engagement that I've had with, with the community, with the committee. I want to take you behind the scenes here a little bit with the administrators. If I, if you'll just, so we have our administrative retreat. And just to give you a little sense of what we were involved with, that last August for a couple of days, you know, some ice-breaking things. We spent a lot of time talking about leadership and engagement. We listened to a bunch of cool podcasts on how I built this. That was a lot of fun. We read a book that's been meaningful, part of a book that's been meaningful to me, called Soft Leadership for Hard Times. Sparked a great conversation. Some of us are soft leaders, some of us are hard leaders, right? We took a look at district improvement planning, and I want to show you some of the data work that we did. We broke down into data teams. We were looking at staff and community surveys, DESI indicators. And then from that, that informed the development of our district improvement plan. And again, I don't expect you to re-go through all these things, you know, with a fine-tooth comb, but it's really just representative of the work that we've been involved with and the instructional leadership that I provided. And from that, we got some hard data around some of the things that we felt like as an administrative team should be priorities for us. And we did some fun activities to arrive at consensus around the goals. So sort of a peek behind the, you know, the administrative, so you get to see what happens. Nothing too exciting, but. So please take a look at those artifact documents, and I hope it all makes sense. I just want to go back briefly to the PowerPoint here. Questions before I go on? Anything?
Just Diane, I work just off the drive. So where it says copy of evidence, those things where it says copy aren't loading up. So I just wanted to, I have them because you emailed them. But sometimes when I go back in the drive, I look at the day. So I don't know, they didn't load correctly. The ones that specifically say copy of evidence, yeah, it didn't load. I have them now, but I just wanted to see if we can load them back on the drive.
I will, yeah. So you have some time, obviously, before you, you know, you have to write the evaluation. So we'll take a look at the.
But we have all the hard copies.
Yeah. I mean, I have them. I just, yeah. I just like them in the drive.
Thank you for printing on that app, Diane. It's really, really, really helpful to have the hard copies, because it's hard to work off.
It is for me.
Yeah, some, some prefer the electronic and then some prefer the, you know, so I think the hard copies might be easier for you.
Yeah, it is.
So this PowerPoint, which also you have in your, in your electronic packet, captures some of the family and community engagement activities that we've been involved with. Lots of surveys, I think. Again, social media, Diane's always after me when I'm at events. She's always telling me to take out my camera, and we'll make sure we're capturing it for Facebook. So a lot of the Facebook posts come directly from me. The inclusive practice work we've been involved with, I want to highlight our work around disaggregating data. We're a high-performing district, obviously, but what is important to us, and I think, believe this is important to us when it's asked, is the school committee, administrative team, is breaking apart that achievement data to make sure that we're, we're checking the performance of all students and that we're seeing all students make effective progress. And so you may recall at the beginning of the year, we applied for this RADAR grant. And the RADAR grant was a grant to encourage districts to effectively allocate resources to promote student achievement. We were unsuccessful with the grant, frankly, but the planning and the, and the evaluation that we did was helpful to us. And to show you that we sort of put our money where our goal was, I think you only have to think back to the FY '19 budget, and I hope you'll, you recognize that that budget recommendation that we brought to you was reflective of the inclusivity goals that we have. In terms of making sure that children are able to be taught in their home schools by qualified special educators. So goal-driven budgeting, budgets that are reflective of that district improvement plan.
Marty, what, if I may, just ask you, what, you said that we were unsuccessful with the RADAR grant?
Yeah.
What did you glean from that experience? You said it was helpful that you think could make us successful in the future if we're going to try to go for it?
Yeah. So the, the grant itself was around, our proposal was to look at the deployment of special educators and paraprofessionals. And so as part of that, we were looking at achievement data of subgroups. And so that analysis that we did was really helpful in terms of identifying where the weak spots were.
Okay.
In terms of performance. I don't know if there'll be another round with DESI with this grant. It's really a modest grant in comparison to, say, the Drug-Free Community Grant or something, but I don't know if we, I'd have to go back and find out if we got any specific feedback, you know, from DESI about the application.
Okay.
But I think just going through the process helped us shine a light. But I think just going through the process helped us shine a light on subgroup performance and so...
So there wasn't anything in particular that pops out that would help us be more competitive, put us in a more competitive sort of position to be able to...
Yeah. Go ahead. Sure, yeah. Yeah, but they, it was a level district, they took districts who had a lower level than we first, so they ran out of fund before they got to the higher achieving districts, I think, so, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But we still have access to all that data, we've been looking at it lots, and some new special data just came out, so, yeah.
Do you feel like that's something that is hopeful for us in the future?
Probably. I don't know, if they're doing it by schools based on kind of level of need, then probably not.
Because we don't fit.
We don't qualify for lots of grants, because of that reason.
The idea behind the grant was to line up budget allocations with your district goals. So it was to line, in this case, lining up our special education expenditures with our stated goals. And so unsuccessful with the grant, but successful in kind of lining up those two things.
I just wanted, I was, I've already looked over this, but one question I had about that is, can you speak to what achievement data was disaggregated?
Sure. There's an artifact that is from one of the RADAR reports that I could try to find, it might take a couple of minutes.
And the RADAR report being, where is that, that information is specific to...
It's accessible on the DESI website. It's a tool that they put in districts' hands to compare your performance to peer districts.
Is it just based on MCAS data? What is it based on?
Uh, Sue, you can help me out again here if you want, but MCAS data largely, and also, it was data, it was data that showed the connection between staffing levels and performance, so paraprofessional staffing and performance, licensed special educators and performance.
And we were able to look at that in our district?
We looked at it lots. So the gist of the grant was to get districts to do just that, right? It wasn't a grant that filtered money back students in any way, it was kind of like stipends for data discovery. And in applying for the grant, I mean, the goal was to get us to look at our data more closely, which is what we did, so...
So more than...
It's tied back resources to performance, basically, in seeing how we could reallocate what we had to make progress, right, Marty?
Yeah, I think it got us thinking about special education staffing and, you know, the audit district expenditures versus what we could create in district. And it really kind of generated a lot of conversation administratively. It really started with Tom, Sue, Jean and I, and then it kind of radiated out to the administrative team around what we could do to be more inclusive. Other data we've looked at, most recently, DESI has put out some equity data, and I think Sue shared an email with you on that, and it's, you know, you're really, they're encouraging districts to look at how marginalized groups are served by experienced teachers, the extent to which they are. We did take a look at, Mrs. Hagie had sent you that email around suspension rates of males and minority groups. So we had actually seen that report, it got a lot of attention across the country, and so we broke that out to look at our suspension rates relative to other communities, so...
I would just, this is the first time I've heard about this even through our budget, so it would help me if there's any further information about how that information was disaggregated and what was used and how it is, it's the first I'm really hearing about it, so it's really helpful. So any information would be great.
And then, yeah, and then, and even when we were doing our MCAS presentation back in the fall, and there might be an artifact on that, that was one of the areas for growth that we identified, was the growth, the academic growth of special education students.
So that's already disaggregated by DESI, so the other stuff is what I didn't know, and so any information that you already have would be helpful.
Yeah. The district improvement plan, one of my finest, most rewarding moments this year, I don't know if I've shared this with Sue, was I came upon, Sue and Jean, they were planning some professional development for next year, and they had out the district improvement plan, and it was, you know, they were trying to line up some PD that matched that plan, and it was sort of like, okay, it makes PD planning, it makes budgeting that much easier when you've got some clearly articulated goals. So, and then, again, you know, trying not to kill you with words here, these are some pictures representing some of the artifacts around instructional leadership. I want to show you, if you'll bear with me, our, what our administrative agendas look like, and, again, to give you some understanding of, let me just make sure I got the right tabs here. Yeah, so this is a November administrative team agenda. What we do is we break it into strategic issues at the top, you know, the things that really involve long-term planning and coordination, and then we hit the tactical stuff, which is kind of the nuts and bolts of administrative leadership. And so you'll see, you know, the levels of, the types of issues that we're working on, you know. Feel free to take a look at that. Again, if you have any questions on any of this, let me know. I'll wrap up here shortly. I appreciate you bearing with me. And then the second standard relates to management and operations. This blue spreadsheet, if you get a chance, you can, you could even Google it, it's the DESI superintendent's checklist, and it just shows you all of the reports and information that we have to supply DESI. This image here is a listing of all the policies we worked on this year, negotiations, the MSBA, so a lot of sort of managerial things that we were involved with this year, important managerial things. Community engagement, again, the Child Abuse Campaign, new website, that was a large effort that we worked on earlier this year. Websites are new and hopefully improved. Worked with the Close Coalition, we've got a senior concert coming up, and again, another clip of one of the superintendent's quarters. And then finally, performance against the standards, standard for professional culture, and a couple of documents that hopefully articulate the professional culture that we've tried to establish. There's an image of the report card there that I just think it's one of the most ambitious undertakings that we've been involved with recently, and it's caused us to think about how we can maintain rigor, how we can approach assessment by providing parents with better information. And I'm also really pleased that it reflects the engagement and involvement of parents, teachers. We did a parent survey that was really, really helpful. And so that's about it. So hopefully, that gives you some sense of what you're looking at, the documents and how they're organized. If you need help with it, let me know, whether it's a technical thing or you just don't understand a document, I'd be happy to. And I'd be happy to meet with committee members individually. I'd welcome that opportunity, actually, to meet with you individually, to talk about my performance and evaluation this year. It's something that certainly principals do that, right, when we evaluate educators, you know, it's that opportunity for exchange, where the goals are articulated, and there's that moment for feedback based on what you've seen. So I would welcome that opportunity. So thanks for your time and attention. Questions? I'd be happy to answer any.
Anyone?
Thanks for getting the information to us.
Thank you.
And that was a great presentation.
Sifting through it, yeah.
Thank you. And I think it's really helpful to have you put in the evidence. I know in past years, I've had to sort through myself to find evidence and this made it easier.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will move along, our next agenda item, the handbooks, do you want to talk about that, Marty?
I may have hit it already, I mean, it's just that we hope by May 9th to bring you that K-8 handbook. It's very drafty at this point. Bridgette Duley, Nicole Paris-Crowe, Amy Bostian have been involved, they're working closely with the other members of the administrative team, so I hope we can get that together for you.
So you gave us preliminary information, the rough draft, basically?
Yeah, it's almost pre-draft, just to show you the direction that this might be headed, and I've already identified some additional topics that I'd like to see included.
Okay. So the only hitch I see, and I just want to ask the committee about this, we will not, we were supposed to, you know, have some presentation today and then follow up with more presentations on May 23rd with the high school handbook, which has also had to, you know, get bumped off, and on May 9th, we're just not going to have enough time for everything that we've got on the agenda. So would you be okay without having a presentation of the handbooks, just going through the information that's been provided to us? Do we have any information yet on the high school handbooks?
They've worked it through with the school council, and I think that's ready to go, but I know that there's some members of the school committee that wanted to chat with Tom, and should have had that chance to chat with Tom. So I, they'll be ready, they'll be ready certainly, well, they'll be ready on the 9th.
Okay, so I'm asking the committee if you're okay without a presentation, to then follow up, if you have questions at a later time, to follow up on your own and just receive the information, sift through it yourself. I'm sure there'll be track changes on anything, so that we'll know what are the changes from last year, but we want to approve them for May 23rd, because that would be the last meeting that we have set up before the election. So Russ and I wouldn't be able to approve them, so Stephanie, I know you...
So last year I had, you know, questions about the handbook. I don't know if they were brought to the school council, I'm going to touch base with Tom Landers. I thought the school council was meeting next week, and I was going to attend that meeting, what I was really hoping and I had to...
I talked to him yesterday, Tom, about some concerns, and he said that they've wrapped up their work on the handbook already, so, yeah, I would touch base with them directly.
Because I heard from Marty, I thought we were doing, like, they were meeting on this next week.
I think he's going to pull, he's going to pull the group together.
Again.
Yeah.
Because what I'm trying to avoid is what happened last year, when they came with the handbook, and I just, you know, we just, that was the first time we saw it, and there were things that we had concerns about, and I just don't want to be in that position again, I want to see it. So if we get it between then and, I just want to make sure that we have time to kind of, you know, throw back some feedback on it without having to vote on it.
Right.
So I am concerned about either date, I don't know how, I don't know. So I'm trying to work with, meeting with Tom, meeting with the council, to try to do some of that vaccine stuff, just because we're at the wire again with having to vote them, so, I don't know.
So I guess, assuming that we get all of the information in full form by May 9th, would you be okay without a presentation? And then if you have follow-up questions afterwards?
Yeah, I don't think we need a presentation, we just need the document and to be able to review it. And then what do we do with things that we have that we want changed? Because what it ends up being is a vote or a no vote and no change, because it has to go back to the council. So I was hoping for this dialogue throughout the year and not getting to the same point.
Right, because at this point in the year, and this was part of my conversation with Tom yesterday, you know, the school councils are really wrapping up, and they aren't meeting that much anymore, and they've, my understanding, and Tom can confirm this when he speaks to you, is that they have done, you know, they've already completed, it sounded like it was complete, the work of the school council on the handbook. But I agree with you in the difficult sort of rushed last minute with the handbook.
Well, especially the high school, they've got to have it, they've got to have that at the start of the year, so I guess we're sort of back where we were last year.
They can always do, and I've been in this position before, where there's changes at any point in the year, where they can do addendums and...
I was there last year where I brought things, and it doesn't, I don't think that it ha, I don't think any change is happening.
So if it came to you the 9th, and then you had it, and then high school staff was here the 26th, I don't know what dates were anymore, the last one, could you get your questions answered that night?
I think the council has to be able to meet to make any changes.
After you make recommendations.
Right, okay, that's the problem.
That's been the recurring kind of hiccup?
It needs to be brought, like, way earlier, yeah.
It's a new committee, so I just wanted to avoid having the new committee on June 14th, yeah, because the election is on the 12th, so...
Well, we all want to avoid that, because it's putting them in a very awkward position to have to evaluate such a dense and important document, not having had the background.
So maybe if we can, if we, is it possible to get the document before the 9th, for the school committee to discuss the document? We don't need a presentation, but any possible suggestions that we have, and then we can give it to Tom, and then he can maybe pull together the council before our 23rd meeting? Maybe that's...
I mean, this is less than ideal, I know that, I'm just, we also have two presentations from the community on the 9th, so I, in terms of time, I'm really concerned that we, our meeting is way too jammed, there's, it's just...
I hate to say this and be like the...
It should be short-changed, though.
Right, the handbook, to me, is more important than the presentation.
Apparently it's been a recurrent issue, and I don't, I don't think it should be short-changed, I don't know.
Maybe we need to move those presentations to another day.
What presentation? Can they come in June, the presentation?
I can try to change at least one of them, and if not, two, I can move them. You know, I had intended on the only real agenda item being really just the evaluation and then, you know, a few other fillers that we needed, but I'm just...
Oh, you mean evaluation presentation?
On the 9th is our evaluation.
Yeah, the presentations from the community.
And now we have to have time, you know, at the meeting to review each other's evaluations, so there's that time, too.
What am I missing? What are the presentations from the community?
Oh, just, we're welcoming some people to, for some celebrations that both are scheduled for the 9th right now, ever, from the Eagle Scouts, in terms of whether or not they'll be ready. There's a chance that only one of them would occur on the 9th.
Could those be moved to the June meeting?
Well, yes, potentially. So I'm working on it, I'm just, I'm just trying to chip away at what's all of a sudden fallen onto a meeting that is already loaded. So I guess, it sounds like you're okay if everyone, everyone is okay without a presentation, at least, and it's really about the timing of approving any of the changes that we're contending with right now.
I'd like a chance for the committee, I don't need a presentation on the handbook, because we just really have to read through it.
Right.
For a chance, just on that agenda, if anyone has read through it and has suggestions or areas they'd like the council to look at, that we're given the opportunity as a school committee to say yes or no, and to vote on that, and then for Tom to bring it back to the council and say, these are changes. So I think a presentation is not necessary, it's having the handbook before the 9th, being able to read through it and bring to the committee any thoughts that you had, so that committee can, I think it would need to be a vote, and then bring it to Tom.
Could ask him to see if he could line up a school council somewhere between the 9th.
Between that, that would be great.
Yeah, I think we should schedule it now, and we really need the information on the high school handbooks, like, as soon as possible.
And are there, are there specific things that either...
Well, I assume there's been drafts already, right?
No, I mean, is there specific things that this committee, or, well, we'll deal with it later, I guess.
I think that committee has that, we won't know.
We don't know until we've seen the changes.
So just get us the rough drafts, if that's all that it is. I know we have the rough draft here on the K-8, but we still need the rough draft on the high school, something, some information. Okay, is that all right with everyone?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you. All right, so next on our agenda is, and just to move into executive session, we will not be returning to open session, so I will entertain a motion.
I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 3, I'm sorry, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Purpose to Conduct a Strategy Session in Preparation with Collective Bargaining with Unit A, and Purpose 7, Consideration of Release of Executive Session Minutes from Previous Meetings, and Purpose Not to Reconvene it to Open Session. Roll call, vote.
Second.
I just want to make sure we say "Purpose 2, To Conduct a Strategy." You read most of it, you just left out the "Purpose 2" up there, "To Conduct a Strategy Session in Preparation with Collective Bargaining with Unit A," just to clarify, so I'll set. Okay? Do you want me to, you know, begin?
We'll do a roll call.
Karen Moore, aye.
Jeff Sutgens, aye.
Melanie Rustine, aye.
Michelle Godsky, aye.
Rusty Braya, aye.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, have a good day, everyone, and we'll move into executive session. I know you have to go. All right.